No voice.
Oh, okay.
I'm mute, are you mute?
He's not muted.
He's in, he's out. It's earlier out there. Eating lunch or something, but. I hate glitches. We can have our meeting anyway because we have a quorum sitting at the table, but I don't wanna leave people out if we give it back.
I don't know.
Yeah.
Friends are coming. Help is on the way. Thank you. Sorry.
We can't hear them. We don't know whether they can hear us or not. We suspect they can't.
It would be a game changer if meetings could always be hybrid.
No, that would be the worst thing that could ever happen.
Well, you.
Forever.
Well, I mean, assuming it worked every time, maybe.
You you could get more people onto the board and get a get more better quality edits.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
I like the aspect of keeping it alive because if somebody's sick or somebody's not available to be here,
Oh, we can't have a killer now.
you could actually keep doing it, but you lose the board.
Yeah.
You lose all of it. It's it's not an effect. I don't think it's effective because you really need to come together and talk and decide and, you know, you can get a lot more done like that, be impersonable. You can't do that on a computer.
Yeah.
Oh, we've, does hap- would a town would've come to a standstill without it, though?
All these communities would've.
Yeah.
So, can you hear us, Francois?
I think the only way they could do is if you see the way the big companies are.
I'm seeing the, okay.
You can hear us?
They can hear all the.
You can hear us.
They can hear all the cameras.
Are you muted?
Well, you think you're with each other? Maybe, if they get to that, to that, that would probably work.
Yeah.
No, I did not muted.
Is Alice's sound on?
Oh, I don't know whether my sound is on. Maybe the sound is on, not on my laptop. I never use it for anything.
I turned it on since it's on.
Okay. Is there a speaker too, or two things you gotta turn on, or is it?
There shouldn't be. It should just be that that easy.
Usually I bring my regular laptop, but I didn't tonight. My Apple.
Oh, no. Oh, no. Oh, no. Don't do that. Don't do that. Please don't do that. Don't do that.
Mm-hmm. What's that mean?
Oh.
What did I do?
You didn't do anything. I did it.
I know.
No signal.
Did the battery abruptly die?
We can charge, we can use one. That's supposed to be plugged in or else it dies on us.
Oh, Sister Mary Fox.
It's like Pinecrisp, yeah.
I can do the, I can log into Zoom here and just turn it if we just wanna use this and record it. I think it will probably be better.
Which is what we've done in the past.
Yeah, you wanna do that?
Yeah.
We try to get this to work every time and it just doesn't wanna. It should work and it never wants to.
It used to work. We used to ha- to have it.
I've seen it work once.
Well, it's a good thing we haven't recorded here.
No, numerous times. Well, it worked before. I don't know why it's not working now.
Yeah.
When the the select board was doing the High Street meeting, it worked for them. That's the only time I've ever seen it work.
Really?
And you got.
Which was good 'cause it was a packed house and there were probably another twenty, thirty people online.
Well, no, fixing the road.
Yeah.
I do.
Oh, let me in.
Alright. Can you hear us now?
Oh, restore Chrome systems. Restore apps. Don't wanna restore my apps?
Alright, there you go. I think we're good this way, Alice. Can you, can you hear Alice?
Here, join the meeting.
Alright, I think we're good, Alice.
You're good at that end?
Let's just rock and roll this way.
Okay.
Rock and roll.
Okay, are we ready?
Is it still recording? Alright, you're good.
So, um, I don't have my statement. I don't know how much of what we're supposed to read. Uh, but I wanna call the meeting to order. I need to announce that this meeting's being digitally recorded and broadcast live.
Thank you.
And also the pursuit to Governor Baker's order, uh, which has been extended. Um, we are meeting, some people, we are meeting some hybrid and some in person. Um, what else do I need to say out of that? Is that sufficient?
I think so.
And the public has to be given an opportunity to come, which they can virtually or in person. I think that covers the high points. Okay, so I want to say I have to introduce, uh, the members that are remotely here. We all have name tags, uh, the people that are here. Christopher, uh, Bill and myself. And the two members coming in remotely are Francois Stiger and John DiMalia. Okay, so that gives us a full quorum, gives us all our members, so definitely a quorum. So, the first item of business is, uh, we want to approve minutes. Um, and I did have, these are minutes from March seventeenth, twenty twenty-two.
I read it.
And I had just one change on this, Mallory. So, you can make a motion and we can change it.
I'll make a motion. We approve the minutes as presented.
Okay, now then we're gonna make it with amendments because we have to fix something.
Second.
Um, alright, before we vote, on the top of the second page, um, it's just a little confusing what she says, and I wanna, uh, make it more what we, what we said, which is, it says, uh, uh, Libdall noted that, and I wanna change that to, instead of the next round of funding, I wanna change it to that the results from the next round of testing will be available in November. And then in the next sentence down, it says, uh, Libdall made a motion to, and insert there, wait to move forward on the feasibility study. And then, uh, until the next round of funding is complete, next round of testing is complete. Do you need, do I need to say that again?
I think I've got it.
Okay, it's, we're not waiting on, it's not the funding, it's the test results.
It's the test results, yeah.
Okay. So, will you set those, this front of the minutes?
I will.
I will, 'cause we've got a motion and a second. Anything further?
There's also a comma that's missing after the five and five thousand, um,
Okay.
in the affordable housing section.
And just Francois, is he saying something?
Francois, how did you have comment?
No comments.
Okay.
Okay, so with those corrections, are we ready to vote? If so, Libdall eye.
Holman's eye.
Menrol eye.
Oh, your eye. DiMalia eye.
Okay, got accepted minutes. On to the next. Um, our next, we have a, uh, celebrity guest tonight.
No pressure.
The Jonathan Voss from, uh, MRPC. He's been working with us for quite a long time now, and he's gonna talk to us about, um, the open space and recreation chapter, the master plan, which is the last of the, the last of the sort of research segmented chapters, and then there's an implementation chapter, and he's also gonna talk to us about
Yep.
how that's put together.
Uh, yeah, and I'm gonna walk through kind of, uh, what needs to be done before we wrap this all up, uh, hopefully, hopefully towards the end of June. And you guys have finished master plan.
Jonathan, I have to tell you one thing, is we did not make this a public hearing tonight for this, so, uh, if you, if you have an abbreviated version or a longer version, you wanna save for May, save for May fifth,
Mm-hmm.
you can, and you can also come in remotely on May fifth if you don't wanna make two trips, but we're happy to hear what you have to say.
Uh. Alright, uh, did, I mean, what I have to say doesn't need to be, uh, for a public hearing right now. It's mainly for, uh, kind of review, 'cause it's been a while since we last met.
Yeah.
Had a couple interruptions. Uh, I don't know if, uh, you guys, uh, wanna have cop, extra copies of, uh, the draft for the master, uh, for the chapter on hand? Alright. And I had, uh, two examples of, uh, you know, the template for the implementation matrix, 'cause I didn't wanna bring a forty-page matrix in for you guys to take a look at, which is what the draft was printed at.
Very helpful. We'll take those. Is there any way you can post that?
And that's just, that's just a short template of what, you know, the entire matrix is gonna be, except it includes goals and objectives for every chapter.
Why don't we have her quickly while you go on, make copies of this and we'll, 'cause she'll post it too, so all of us can have one? And there's one on the, the ma- this is posted. She just posted, so that's why.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
I just printed it out because I still prefer to read on paper.
Uh, this is the draft of the open space and recreation chapter, which we've previously, uh, reviewed before, although I believe that was back in early September.
Mm-hmm. I I did notice that some of the edits we talked about and proposed were not in the document.
Um, part of that is because, uh, I sent it out for, uh, feedback and I didn't hear a reply on those, uh, so that might've been missed on my part for this, which is one of the reasons protection base again, to include those. I do have notes to incorporate, uh, again, but it seems like, uh, some of those comments weren't complete. We only had a limited amount of time to go over it.
Good, we'll do that tonight then, and then we'll get a finished product for the fifth grade.
And this is, this is a priority for me right now, is that this is getting, you know, most of my time and attention, so it's not competing with eight other projects.
You said, there it is.
Hey, Mallory.
I.
Okay.
Give an extra pen, Mallory. Yeah, there's a bunch of them. Toss one there.
Actually have.
Uh, yeah.
I've got a bunch of my.
Oh. Well, thanks to my rescue here. Alright, just remind me to give it back to you. There's a bunch here. Okay, so, open space.
Um, the introduction hasn't really changed. Uh, it's pretty standard, just introducing what, you know, conservation is, what, uh, open space and recreation are, uh, where signi- uh, significant source of this chapter came from, which was the twenty nineteen updated, uh, recreation plan. Um, and then also parts have been incorporated from, uh, surveys that were done earlier on in the, uh, in the master plan process, and also, uh, that were performed along with the, um, housing production plan update and some other surveys. Um, then we go to, into a short analysis of the importance of open space protection, uh, which just covers, you know, why it's important, the economic cost associated with growth, and then, you know, the quality of life for Hubbardston residents.
So, in this section, there were, uh, a couple places where we had discussed before about potential edits.
Okay.
Uh, the first one being in the, uh, the list of activities in the sep- second paragraph. Hubbardston is a destination for recreational pursuits such as camping, hunting, skiing, hiking and horseback riding. Uh, we had talked about adding mountain biking to that list.
Mountain biking.
And then, uh, also generally, uh, we had talked about how, um, open space protection is also, uh, an issue for economic development in the town specifically.
Because so much, yeah, so much is held by DCR, there's, you know, limited opportunities for growth, especially if conservation is prioritized even more so than it already is.
Yep, and, um, it's, uh.
So, where were you gonna put that?
Um.
In short, protection is of open land is important is the third paragraph. For human wildlife, physical and mental well-being, you wanna add it as a sentence, and also economic development? Do you have a place in mind?
Um, I don't have a specific place in mind. I just wanna make sure
Okay, but you can put it in where it fits.
it gets in there for the importance.
It it is brought up in the other parts of this.
Well, and and that's a, a follow-up question, uh, for me on whether or not that is something that should be highlighted here more or it comes up elsewhere in the plan, because we do talk about, like.
I think it's important enough to to note that a significant, like, much more so than in other communities, Hubbardston already has a significant amount of conservation area that is in permanent protection. And I think that's important to note that being concerned about conserving even more open spaces isn't necessarily a priority for the town. It's making use of what already exists that you do have access to and that can be, you know, developed with, for, you know, actual recreational use in the town. It can also be, you know, benefit economically.
Yeah, because elsewhere in the master plan, we also, um, we talk about agro tourism and ecotourism.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and it's, well, it's something that I think is important, but it's also become a major item for the, uh, the EDC advisory committee to the select board, uh, where focusing on agro tourism and ecotourism as a way to grow business in town has become, um, a a key issue. Uh, it also was talked about quite a bit in the, um, the CM, CRPC report, uh, central mass planning. They did a report for the Quabbin region.
Yeah, I've I've briefly looked at it.
Yeah, there, um, the recommendations that they had in that were along the same lines, where the the whole Quabbin region, uh, should focus on the agro tourism, ecotourism opportunities that present itself
Mm.
because of the amount of land that's already protected.
Who did that study?
Uh, Central Mass Planning.
No. Uh, it's, it's the Worcester-based, um, yeah, uh, planning region, and they did an examination of the entire Quabbin reservoir region.
The Worcester-based, um, okay.
Yeah. All. Yep, all of the other, uh, communities in the, the Quabbin regional school system are with them. So, there was a report that was requested by the select boards of the town and by the school district about how, um, how the towns can work with the district and how each of them can make some changes, where hopefully we can still afford to pay for people's, uh, ten years from now. And some of the recommendations that came in there were also a look at some of the economic development opportunities we have as a town, uh, from kind of an outsider perspective, because they're not our normal planning agency. Um, they're our neighbors to the south planning agency.
So, their father words were agro. Agricultural, ec- agro and out- ecotourism more.
Yes.
Yes.
That's awful.
And I can include talking about addressing unmet open space and recreation needs as part of that unmet need is, you know, being able to properly take advantage of what's already in place in terms of agro tourism and, you know, agro and ecotourism.
We we have people doing that here, vineyards that are trying to set up a shop and.
Yep.
Yeah.
Uh, and then, you know, moving on from the, the kind of broad introduction, uh, it's the recent his, uh, the recent history of community accomplishments. Uh, this probably might be a little bit of updating. I know there's some work that's gone on since, you know, since COVID. Um, and this was, this was, uh, just pulled on based on the compliments from the, you know, the list of goals and recommendations from the updated, uh, open space and recreation plan.
Yeah. Also, Jennifer Bernie and I worked really hard on the open space map.
Yep.
Which is really updated. And they, and actually, I shouldn't, I shouldn't say, I shouldn't say myself, I, because it was really the open space committee that updated it, and they wound up working with her. But there's a map that accompanies this chapter that's really excellent.
Oh, good.
Yep, and it's a, it's a rather large map. It's the smallest format it comes in. It's about seventeen by eleven, so.
Yeah, it's hard to, to, uh, to send it. I know, she sent it and.
Um, I can, I can.
Bring it next time.
I will, I'll bring that and I'll pass it along so you guys have a, you know, PDF you can access to look at.
Okay.
Right, right, and if you have a paper copy, it's always nice to.
Yes. I will make sure to bring that along come May fifth.
Okay. It even encompassed that new big land purchase a year ago, the seventy acres up in, I mean, it's really up to date. It's great.
Oh, good.
Little gravel pits and, so it's in the land use chapter, but.
Yep. It tou- it touches on what you're doing with the land. It does open space as well.
Right.
Right.
But it does open space as well, right?
Uh, and then we move on to the community setting, uh, where we go over, you know, the, you know, the location and the environment of Hubbardston. Uh, we touch on the, um, you know, just the landscape character, the water resources, especially with the Quabbin reservoir, uh, having a lot of headwaters here. Um, and then we talk about the watershed. Uh, we touch upon the DCR, uh, speci- the, the division of water supply protection, which is, you know, the biggest landholder in Hubbardston. And we just, uh, pretty much just go through the entire watershed, what goes to where, how it flows, how it impacts the community. We talk about the wetlands, us, uh, which is a brief, brief excerpt. And then the aquifers and recharge areas. And then we just do a brief overview of vegetation, wildlife, uh, public shade trees, scenic landscaping. And scenic landscape is one that's gonna get highlighted more. We talked about that with, uh, ecra and agro tourism.
So, we do have, like, community farms too?
Mm-hmm.
I don't, we have, like, pick-your-own-brieberry-farm. We've got, um, Ladybug.
Ladybug.
Ladybird?
Ladybug.
Ladybug Farm, which I don't think you pick your own there, but it's all.
They'll pick your own, but she has a storefront.
Won't produce, a local shop. We have a vineyard that's just been planted at the corner of Mount Jeff and Malone Road, and they're hoping to
Capri farm.
have a tasting room.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
There's Capri goat cheese.
Yeah, we have two cheese conveyors and.
Yeah, Palco, Palco Farm.
So, we've gotta start on it.
So, I have, um, I have a question on that, um, and it it directly relates to this. It also relates to what we're doing with the agricultural advisory committee.
Yeah.
So, in that, uh, that report that I mentioned earlier from CMRPC, one of, in one of the appendices, they have a list of working properties. And they did that for all of the other towns, but they didn't do it for us. And my guess is because they don't already have that data, because they don't serve us as a planning agency. So, my question to that is, do we have that data anywhere or is that data that we can apply? Because that's data that seems relevant to this. And it's also relevant to the work that we're doing in those other committees, where we have a, a list of sixty-one A properties, but we don't have a list of just working properties. And their working property list listed everything, like stuff that was being used for timber growth, stuff that was being used for farming, anything where somebody was growing or harvesting or.
I think. George, I think assessors would probably be the person to ask.
The, the farmers are pretty private people, some of them, 'cause we asked for, that we, we could put in a list of the farms, and we got pushback on that. That people didn't wanna be listed as a destination. Some of the farmers really don't wanna do that. Um, but if you could, you could do it by this many cheeseries, this many vineyards, this ma- you know? Uh, if if George can help you do that. George was very helpful in getting our solars together and our gravel pits and, uh, and there is a, there is a code for the farms, right?
That's great. Yeah.
So, he's got the assessors database.
Yep.
So, it isn't impossible to pick those out. And then if, if we can get it to you by May fifth, so you can incorporate it,
Mm-hmm.
um, incorporate it by category, but not names, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll leave, I'll leave private names out of it and just include.
Right.
Or addresses or, but, yeah.
Name of the address, yeah.
Yeah, and just include, hey, what type of property is this? It's a vineyard, it's just a farm. These are the, these are the assets that are in Hubbardston.
Yeah, and you can say based on the assessors' records if you want, you know?
Yep. And then if there are any open to the public, that's all we're in those. I can just double-check that to make sure that, you know, the community setting is up to date as possible, along with the unique environments and stuff.
Okay.
Uh, and then a couple popular scenic, uh, vistas are mentioned with Mount Wachusett, uh, Brigham Pond, Mermeadow, and then, uh, Comet Pond from Old Princeville Road. And that, that kind of ends the brief description of all of the, you know, scenic landscapes in Hubbardston. And then we talk, uh, brief excerpt about the unique environments.
Can I ask, interrupt you just one? When unique environments first sentence says, we know a lot about gravel pits sitting on the board. So, the town has several unique features. The northwest section of town is an area of vast gravel reserves, which have been heavily mined over the years. That's true. Uh, none are presently, there are no.
Active.
Active, none of which are presently active. If you put in a clause like that?
Okay. Yep, uh, f- uh, former, I can just put that in right at the start of formerly.
Okay. Well, they could, they could reapply. You could put formerly, I guess, but nobody, they're non-active.
Yes. Currently, currently, currently non-active.
Yeah, none, however, none are currently active, if you.
Uh, yep, um, and it mentions how that contains some of the most biotrophers.
Yep, that's true.
And then, uh, just a brief, uh, notice of the Indian caves.
Mm-hmm.
And then we move on to open space and recreation assets. Most of this is just talking about, uh, parcel classification, what's, uh, held as protected versus non-protected, um, what's held privately versus, uh, what's held by municipal parcels, and have to include that seventy-acre purchase in there.
It's seventy-something. It's, um, what's the name of the North Quabbin Land Trust?
Mm-hmm, over on, um.
Yeah. Mount Jeff?
No, it's way up in the corner. It's by Fitchburg.
I thought that was the Quabbin Land Trust that got that.
Uh, North Quabbin just got one when I, like, first started, like, three years ago.
This was two years ago. A huge, it was a CPC-funded article. Was the north, you know, we did that cutout parking lot for them.
Two years ago. With Jassy Bransco? Yeah, that was, that was East Quabbin.
Yeah.
East Quabbin Land Trust.
Yeah. Jassy Bransco and North Quabbin also have on Mount Jeff.
Yeah, that is Mount Jeff. This is way up in the corner.
Yeah, that's East Quabbin.
East Quab- it is on the, uh, maps.
Yep.
Yeah, it's right here in the bottom paragraph.
It's in the paragraph, yeah, but I mean, in the ma- you know, this map of land uses, it's on there. Uh, it was one of the amendments that, uh, Jennifer Bernie and I worked at putting in there.
I just, uh, I might include a small list of the most noticeable, you know, parcels that are held separately. And then we come, we come down to the state-owned parcels, uh, which again reinforces that most of the town is, you know, owned by the Commonwealth. And then we get to the analysis of needs.
Jonathan, why do you say a third? Where did you pick up the third, the third paragraph? Steps should be taken to preserve as a much, as m- to preserve much of the one-third of Hubbardston land that is either developed nor conserved. Where does that?
That was a previous, that was left in by mistake. We had addressed that, uh, at length last time about, since so much is conserved, that's, it's not quite as much of a priority, so it's more of a use what is available in a, in a responsible way.
Yeah, I think we're down to, like, two point six percent of private, uh, unrestricted land that's developable.
Yep.
Then there was like another ten percent that had, like, some, some restrictions.
Uh, the, uh, partial, partial conservation restrictions, I believe. Uh, most cases because it abuts or it's close in proximity to wetlands.
Yeah.
Uh, so that section won't be thrown out, but it'll be reworded to emphasize the need to use what is available versus conserving more land.
Yeah, I was looking at the, um, I was looking at the twenty twenty annual report because it was the only one that was on the website before I came tonight. And for, for that year, we got four hundred and ten thousand dollars in pilot money for forty-seven percent of the town, when, when you do the math on, on what the acreage is, it's just, it's a lot. And then the rest of the town raises seven million dollars in property tax revenue, the other fifty-three percent.
Say that again?
So, uh, it's either, it's, is it forty-six or forty-seven percent of the town is owned by DCR?
I believe it's forty, forty-seven for one, yeah. It's almost, it's almost half of the town that's outright owned by DCR.
Yeah, so. Yeah.
Okay.
So, in twenty twenty, they paid us four hundred and ten thousand dollars in pilot funds for a payment in lieu of taxes.
Okay, yeah.
The other fifty-three percent of the town generated seven million dollars in tax revenue.
Okay.
So, it's, it, when I look at that, I see kind of, um, it, it's one of the reasons for why we need to have reasonable access to some of this open space stuff, because there's so much property that is taken out of just.
Tax revenue.
Yeah, ju- that's just taken out of tax revenue that, that we need to be able to have reasonable access to try to do some kind of economic development.
Mm-hmm.
And that, yeah, the open space is great. We need it.
Yeah, I get.
So, more of it's even good, but.
So, your point is almost fifty percent of the town only generates, uh,
It's owned by the state.
Like.
Four out of seventy.
Yeah, like five percent.
Five percent of the revenue, yeah. I get it, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
I don't know whether you need to include that, though, but it's interesting. I do think the forty-seven percent is actually good if that isn't in here somewhere, Jonathan.
Yeah, no, I, I think it's a good thing. I'm gonna, when we get to the goal section, I have a couple of comments that I wanna add that, that I think are, or a couple of goals that I wanna add that I think help address that, so.
Yeah, that's right. Okay. Uh, and then we go, uh, and then follows it up with, uh, recreation, uh, which, you know, need to, need to highlight, um, that would be the areas you highlight the most, the need to be able to make use of all of the conservation land in Hubbardston for recreation needs or, you know, just possible usage by residents and, you know, any, any tourism, you know, kind of structured economy that Hubbardston's looking to develop.
We actually have two Rod and Glenn Clubs, do we not? What's the one on Street or Road?
No.
Uh, that one is in Westminster, I believe.
Street or Road. Yes, Street or Road.
Just on the end of Street or Road, that's what?
No, that's, that's in Westminster.
Oh, I get it.
That's the Westminster Ro- um, Rod and Gun Club. Not Rod and Gun Club, it's a shooting club. Can't think of the name of it.
Fish.
The only one we have is right here on Williams Road.
Okay, alright, sorry about that. And there's another comment there is we do actually have a second playground at the center school. So, you have, there's also a small basketball court and playground located at.
Yes.
And.
And.
There's, you know, there's the big one at the rec fields, right? And then there's a smaller one at the school, but it's new and it's quite nice, actually.
Yeah. And then we get to the goals and actions.
So do we have a land prior- land protection priority map?
Uh, that's something that recent, so by land protection priority, um, I mean, uh, a hierarchy for if properties come up.
Yes.
Come up.
I guess Jonathan what that means.
Uh, yeah, this is almost pretty much exactly what it is. It's.
For the sixty one A prop- sixty one properties?
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, it's been noticed that we don't have one of those.
Okay, so then you need to say review and update, you have to say develop and keep current.
Yeah, the, the select board actually just asked Open Space to put together one of those.
Oh, cool.
Because it came up at a select board level that, um, that we have all of these properties that are in sixty one, but we don't have any plans or any ability to purchase them. Because we're not budgeting for it at all currently.
So that would be changed to, yep, develop and maintain.
Develop and maintain. A land protection priority map. It should be actually map and. Land, but the map would be a start.
Yeah. Well, um, I, I wasn't able to make it to the last open space meeting, but they were supposed to report back on the preliminary draft of it for that.
Take out the as needed, because we definitely need it.
For one kind of general comment through the goals and, and actions.
Yep.
Uh, there's a lot of mention of trails and just trail. Uh, I think it would be good to clarify either multi-use or just if it's not multi-use. I guess, there's a lot of people that look at trail and just look at trail as purely hiking trail if it's not specified as multi-use.
Yeah.
So where, um, in pretty much every place where trail appears, I, I think we'd be doing. Doing ourselves a favor if we made that multi-use trail.
In multi-modal or?
But excluding RTVs, ATVs.
Uh, multi-use usually implies human-powered.
Okay, I know the logo. Does it?
But I, I don't know what your thoughts are on that.
I know that people are gonna be unhappy about opening up our trails still.
You put multi-use, it doesn't say not.
Well, ATVs are legal on all state lands.
Oh, it is.
Full hard stop, yeah.
What about snowmobiles? Snowmobiles are kind of allowed.
I don't know that they're technically allowed, and there are a couple of properties where you can legally ride dirt bikes, but none of those are in Hubbardston, like, um. Uh, Franklin State Forest and, yeah.
Really?
There's a couple that have actual dirt bike trails. I think maybe F Gilbert might be the other one, but none of them are here.
I don't know where you'd wanna fit that in, if you wanna give Jonathan develop a, a, a suggestion.
Well, I guess, so like some of the specific places where I saw that was, um, goal four.
Mm-hmm.
So in action to explore opportunities for new trailhead and trail systems, so that I would prefer to see as multi-use trail systems.
Yep.
And then it came up again in action eight. Plan to facilitate for trail connections.
Wait.
And I know that that sometimes becomes a complicated issue because Audubon and NASA Wildlife, um, they don't allow anything other than hiking.
They also don't allow dogs, which is really annoying to me as a dog owner, you know?
Yeah.
I mean, I understand it, I'm a bird lover too, but.
Audubon, you're not even allowed to, uh, to run in, never mind.
It be- it's tricky to get people to not do that.
Yeah.
They just have to slow down if someone comes by to check up.
Well.
A little ridiculous.
There isn't a, there isn't an action eight on this, so, I mean, do you need to add it? Do you know what?
Uh, goal four, action eight, uh, plan for and facilitate trail connections.
Yeah.
Uh, wherever practically possible and explore opportunities to connect local trails and the possibility of multi-use.
Yeah.
We'll include the possibility of multi-use in that language.
In action four, goal four also.
Mm-hmm. Uh, explore opportunities for additional trails. Multi-use as well. All right, um. Yep, so goal one covers the, you know, land protection, uh, that, that protection priority map, seems like it might be more important.
I see, I see, I was reading action for goal items, all right, I got it.
Yep, uh, goal four, uh, goal two is townwide improvements, um, uh, focused on, you know, green development.
Yeah.
Uh, goal three is community involvement, uh, just, you know, increased participation and, you know, education where, where necessary and able. And, uh, a, a number of those are just like, you know, continuing, you know, public meetings and hearings as needed. Uh, volunteer opportunities when it comes to trail maintenance and education, um, things along those lines. Goal four, which we've just touched on, is, oh, trail and open space land improvement. Where I will take steps to, you know, incorporate multi-use language throughout that, so it's not just hiking. Uh, goal five is resource protection and enhancement. Uh, goal six is the Mount Jefferson Malone Road Conservation Area stewardship. Uh, which are a couple of those are just, you know, improve the overall use. And, uh, continue to, continue to work on as needed, uh, it's stuff with, um, signage, self-guided nature trails, improve the parking area. Um, make sure trails are a little more accessible in some cases.
They have done some new things with signage, but you can leave them on there because they, by re- redoing trail markers and stuff up on Mount Jeff, we walk it every day, so it's on call.
All right.
So, I don't know if that section is the, um. I don't know if that section is the right place for it, but there's, there's partnership with the NGOs, but there's not partnership with any of the usage groups.
Mm-hmm.
Um, any of the organized usage groups that are out there and working with or managing trails like the. It's like the Berry Trail Riders for equestrians and, and there's like the Mountain Bike Association and the AMC and all of those things. So there's opportunities to build partnerships to, to take care of some of the trail maintenance concerns.
Yeah, um, I might work to incorporate those in either goal three or, uh, goal four, 'cause goal three is community involvement. And, uh, none of them have, you know, specific, you know, custodial, you know, duties for any of the trails, the organizations themselves, right?
Uh, none of them do in Hubbardston, but they do in other communities, and that's one of the reasons there's an opportunity.
I don't know. Okay.
Like, there's examples of, um, of the Bay State Trail Riders and of NEMBA signing MOUs with towns in order to take over the maintenance for areas and.
Right, if that's something Hubbardston's interested in, we can put that into goal four in terms of, uh, just a way to, you know, maintain and explore, you know, use of the existing trails in Hubbardston.
Then the opportunities to, to partner for it.
Yeah.
Yeah, 'cause ultimately we're, we're a little resource strapped, so coming up with ways to help offset some of the, the town's opportunity.
Yeah, uh, I can, I can expand on action five, uh, actually pretty significantly. Considering that was, uh, continue to repair, enhance and maintain existing trails through volunteer cooperative efforts. I can include partnerships with, uh.
Yeah, stakeholder groups.
Stakeholder groups.
Stakeholder or trail user groups, whatever you think the, the most appropriate wording is.
If they're trail users, they're probably stakeholders.
Oh, fair enough.
Uh, and then we come to the last, uh, goal, uh, which is the town communication with state agencies and legislatures. And one of the biggest ones around that was with DCR for usage of the land in Hubbardston.
Yeah, so this is a place where I think we need to be a bit more ambitious with the goals.
Okay.
Um, and I just, uh, I spent a little bit of time just kind of playing with wording today. Um, and like one possible would be urge the Massachusetts Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs to support and promote non-motorized recreation and trail access to the Ware River watershed. Sustainable recreation made possible by public access to trails is important to the long-term economic development of the town of Hubbardston.
He's gonna give you that.
Yeah, I.
I'm gonna say I'm gonna make a copy.
No, 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 I'm just, I'm just, I'm just.
Well, no, I, I did print it specifically.
Yeah, perfect, yes.
Boy, you do a great shorthand.
I have another, uh, little plug I wanna put into when you're all done.
Yeah, because there's, a- and it's not, there's two ways to look at it. The first way is, is there are a lot of non-cart road trails through the watershed that are, some are legit, some aren't legit, but there should be a process for weeding those out. Figuring out what can be sustainable and then those trails should be made legitimate trails for people to use. The next part of it is, is there are a whole bunch of trails where if you look at the, the management plan from twenty ten. Uh, they put in as those dashed kind of cart road, where they are essentially roads in the woods. They're not even like forgotten cart roads. They are, I think the term's almost, uh, they're class three roads, like you can drive a car through them, they're in Gucci. And like up through where like the wildlife management area is and the area off of like Grimes Road and Old Westminster. Those are currently no public access. And they are just, uh, huge, huge areas of this town that have roads through them. And there's technically no public access allowed to them under the current management plan. And that, I believe, is hurting us as a community quite a bit. Especially seeing how four hundred and ten thousand, forty seven percent of the town. Uh, at the whole area around Adams Road. That road that, uh, it's not, it's only kind of a road now.
Mm-hmm, it used to go all the way through.
Yeah, uh, and those are all of those roads back there closed to public access.
Well, they're still there.
Yeah, they're still there.
Yep.
So, so what's a, consider possible development of a green cemetery. We have lots of cemeteries.
All right.
Moldigrass.
Is this?
Sorry, I couldn't help it.
They're, they're interesting. Some of them are little small cemeteries, like the one up in Berry Falls, that people, you know, wander around, read the tombstones.
Yeah.
Yep.
But what, what is, uh, is that, this is a thing, right? Green cemeteries?
Uh.
Or does it mean you don't put gravestones up, you just put the ashes in, or what does that mean?
Like compost, compostable? Are you talking about?
Uh, it's been a while since I've looked at this, uh, this is one specific goal, so I might have to revisit that. I might have to revisit that, but.
You wanna come back and tell us? I think it needs a better explanation.
Yeah, I believe it's just for ones that are, um, open to continuous use, uh, so you're not expanding on, expanding on them really. It's just made, uh, more frequent use of, but I will come back to you on that as soon as tomorrow. I'll get you an answer on that as soon as tomorrow.
Put it in there and then somebody will be calling me up saying, are you talking about compostable coffers or something?
Yeah. Or getting buried in mushroom seeds.
Right.
I mean, it, it could, that could be, that could be a good ecotourism angle.
It is a thing.
I just did a quick Google search and it says be memorialized in the forest of the green cemetery of trees.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Gex.
Is that what you're talking about?
They'll turn your body into compost and then.
Right.
Well, tell us what.
It's, it's pretty, it's pretty much you get buried in the planet tree in a lot of ways.
Yeah.
Tell us what, what that means before we do this and then somebody says, do you know what this means? Okay, and then I wanna.
I can also, I can also just make them more transparent in the, in the action itself.
Right, and if you read it and it, I don't know, and we'll have to think about it when we wanna do it. I don't wanna disturb the dead, you know, okay.
Okay. We'll call it gray.
So I have another, uh, little plug I wanna put in. On page six, you have public shade trees.
All right.
Yes.
And you have this lovely sentence that says shade trees exist on all Hubbardston roadways. And I would like you to add to that, due in large part to the adoption of the Scenic Roads Act, is that the name of it, in the nineteen seventies? People don't realize the decades that have gone into protecting those trees. And I can give you the date it passed to, if I think about, remind, can you send him a note now with the date? And, and if that's the right name of it, the act, the scenic tree.
Scenic Roads Act?
Scenic Roads Act, I think is the name of it.
All right.
But people have to come to us to cut down those trees, and we often tell them, no, you can't.
We put them in for a reason.
Well, we do if they're leaning on their houses or something, but anyway. Okay, so, i- if you can do that and get it back to us before the fifth.
Yeah, absolutely.
You can get some feedback if anybody's got anything more. And, um, Mallory, is there anything Jonathan, uh, John?
Nineteen seventy three.
Nineteen seventy three.
Nineteen seventy three. It's in, it's not every road in town, but it's a significant number of the main roads.
There's a bunch of.
Yeah, it's a whole pile.
Oh.
So.
Alice, we might wanna, I'm just looking at the fifth and I forgot Monday was a holiday, so I don't know if we'll have enough time to post it.
Okay.
So I don't know if you wanna bump your meeting to, do it to the nineteenth, or if we just wanna meet once in May and do it on the twelfth?
I don't know, what do you think, folks? You wanna meet on the fifth and then on the nineteenth? We already have a power people, we've told the fifth, right?
Be flexible.
I can make myself available for either days.
Would it be easier to put a twelve?
Well, I could just get them in on the twelfth, or we could wait one more week on the nineteenth. It's up to you guys, but I just forgot that we have Patriots Day and we're closed, so I won't be able to get the add-in and I'm tired.
Either one's fine with me, the twelve and the nineteenth, but.
All right, yeah, let's make it, so our second general meeting would be the nineteenth, right?
Mm-hmm.
Um. Or we could just meet once in the middle. Why don't you ask, ask our two remote people, could they meet on May twelfth if we only met once in May?
Prince Juan, John, did you hear that?
They're lost in.
Would you be able to meet on the twelfth of May?
Just once for one meeting?
No, I mean.
Just for, yeah, for one meeting in May.
Please, sir, yes. Yes, I can as well.
Okay.
Okay, so then we'll make that our official decision at the end of the meeting, that last thing for business, tonight was our next meeting. We'll officially announce it's gonna be May twelfth and it'll be a one-meeting month unless.
Can, can I ask a dumb question here, but, uh, uh, Mallory, did you say Patriots Day is, if, um, May fifth?
No, Patriots Day's Monday.
That's what I, oh, okay.
Yeah, so I can't post it, I can't post it for May fifth, I can't get the legal add-in.
Oh, because of the timelines, I, I get it now.
Okay, so the twelve.
Thank you.
Okay, now, he's, um, you, you wanna tell us about this lovely handout you gave us, which is the, sort of the cornerstone of the arch here for our master plan?
Yeah, it's a, it's a, it's a small template, so the last of, uh, the chapters for master plan chapter is the implementation chapter. And it's pretty much just a giant matrix of all of the goals and actions from all of the chapters, um, for the entire master plan. And what it does is it takes all of the goals and actions for each chapter and it breaks them down for who has, um, or what board or committee has leadership for implementing them. Uh, what other boards or committees, uh, will be involved or assisting them in, in any capacity. And then it also, you know, approximates what the projected, you know, budget for this is gonna be. Uh, and then it also provides, you know, an estimated timeframe, short-term, medium-term, long-term, you know, one to three years, three to five or six years, and then six to nine years or more. Uh, and then, those are the, those are the biggest ones. And part of those are just gonna come from, you know, the town on, you know, what the priority of this project in this chapter is. And then, you know, how long do you think it would take the town to address this? And the rest of those MRPC, you know, we take a shot at, you know, filling out as best we think, uh, for, you know, who has the most responsibility, who takes the lead for each project. And then what other, you know, groups in the town will be involved in them in terms of, you know, municipal government. Uh, and then also what we estimate, your, what we generally estimate, uh, the cost for each of the various actions will be. And that's done for all of the actions across all of the chapters, and we send that to you. And you send it to everybody in town who's even remotely involved, so they can give feedback on it and we can adjust things as needed. And it also lets us do kind of a last minute check on all of the goals and actions, uh, because this is a long process, it's taken a little longer than usual because of COVID. It was very much appreciated. Um, and it lets us also update goals and actions, you know, for things that have already maybe been started, or maybe for short-term ones that have already been done. In the, you know, two or three years since this entire project has kind of been kicked off. Um, and that's the last of the master plan chapters, but it's also the most involved in terms of, you know, having to reach out to all of the boards and committees in Hubbardston in order to get feedback.
You're thinking of having this done by June?
That's the, that is the ultimate goal. It might be a little aggressive.
Yeah, I think so.
Wow, so we, we have a board-wide, and I forgot, we, you know, we made the twelfth just now, right?
Um.
The eleventh, we have a town-wide, what is the, a meeting on the eleventh?
I don't think everyone needs to go, but they can, just chairs can just go, or everyone can. I posted it, so quorum can attend if needed, or wanted, but-
Okay, okay, well, if-
Yeah, every chair is a chair.
If you're interested in getting something out to everybody, we'll all be gathered in a room for this townwide meeting on the eleventh.
Alright.
But it might be early to do anything, but even, uh, uh, like an introductory thing you wanna pass out, I'll be happy to-
Well, I can, I can, even just getting feedback on, you know, a draft since the open space chapter isn't completely finalized, isn't finalized. Uh, but since we have gone over the goals and actions a little bit, uh, I can incorporate those into the draft matrix as it currently exists, and it's already incorporated all of the, um, all of the goals and actions from the other chapters I've been done over here.
Oh, you've been writing on this already?
Yeah, this is, this has been in the works for a little while, so I haven't, I haven't just started it, but it's a couple dozen pages.
Oh. Okay, okay.
So I didn't, I didn't print up the whole thing to bring it in. Um, but I can send out the draft to you if you're comfortable with most of the goals and actions. So far, I can incorporate those as they exist already, and then I can send, uh, draft out to you as soon as next week, take a look at. And then we can begin talking about distributing it to the rest of the boards and committees for feedback. For, and mainly it's like, you know, the board of, uh, or the select board, the, mm, the housing board, the zoning board of appeals, uh, which are really the, the big ones that, you know.
How about fin- finance committee?
Yep.
Definitely.
That hop back and forth on, on if they're gonna be the lead for a lot of these goals, or if they're just gonna be kind of taking an assisting role in terms of, you know, lending support or information, in terms of, you know, getting things done. And then we take the entire thing and we open it up for, you know, the last round of public comment.
That's excellent, okay. Well, well, I think, uh, if we could announce this on our May eleventh meeting, I'll tell our town, our town administrator that this is a big goal, and would you please distribute whatever we can distribute and tell people.
It'd be a big hope.
Put it on their radar, right?
Ryan will be.
We'll help you.
Ryan will be backed.
Oh, Ryan's back? Glad to hear it.
Did he back working?
Yeah, we saw him today. Not working, May second is his first day.
Oh, wow. So gi- giving him a little bit of time to get his feet, feet, feet on solid ground.
Work out, yeah.
Before.
Before it's broken down, it's good.
Alright.
Uh, yep, and I can, I can begin, you know, getting the, uh, the implementation matrix, uh, out to you guys as early as next week if you're comfortable with me incorporating the, you know, goals and actions for the open space chapter as is currently.
Send it to Mallory. I mean, you can copy me on it, but send it to Mallory, because-
Alright, we'll do.
She checks every day and like, things get lost. On my work, on my computer sometimes.
Uh, and that's, uh, that is the very last part of the master plan cro- process. After that, you'll have a complete master plan. Uh, it goes before the state, they stamp it, and they're all set for eight, nine, ten years.
It's really a, a great document. I mean, it made us think about a lot of things.
Yep.
Uh, and we're, we'll probably, or at least, you know, on my end, I'll probably have to do some updating on the implementation matrix as we hear back from, you know, the various, you know, laws, or we've done this, or we've been working on this already, we started, and that'll have to be updated before it's, you know, finalized, ready for the town.
Yeah, yeah, great.
Alright.
Great.
So I will, uh-
Do you wanna come back on the twelfth?
I think that would probably be, be helpful. Don't wanna, don't wanna have another month-long hiatus at this point. Uh, yeah, no, I'll come back on the twelfth and-
Cause that'll be our public hearing.
Yeah, actually, and I'm-
Okay, I don't know where you live, where you come from.
Uh, it's not that long of a drive from here, I'm western, so it's a hop and skip.
Okay, okay.
Uh, and then I will get the implementation out to Mallory, uh, next week, not on Monday.
Yeah. Yeah, we're not here, so.
Oh, they're not here.
Uh, and open space as, any, any additional feedback you have, just send it to me as, as it comes up, and work on getting that.
Okay.
Excellent.
Dropped up.
Excellent. Thanks, thanks for coming and spending so much time with us this evening, it's very helpful.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for having me. Yeah.
Okay, wow, um.
Take care.
You too.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks, Jonathan. So, um, as you see, this got crossed out in red. We have, there was nothing formally, uh, uh, well, there was no formal application for a special permit, but there's been a lot of talk and discussion in town, and Mallory posted the maps for the cell tower.
The application was uploaded.
Uh, oh, is there a formal application?
Yeah. Yep, there was one, but he withdrew it until, he's gonna resubmit.
Okay, so I just, I've just a little bit, I should've posted maybe a little bit more on this. So I sent what was posted, the maps, before he actually filed the formal application, I think. I don't know, anyway, I sent it to Bill Murray, and I said, give us a estimate for what it would cost to, to be, for you to be able to determine that it's complete.
Right.
Cause this involves a whole lot of stuff we never look at, right?
A lot. Yes.
I mean, it, it, it isn't out of our day-to-day planning board stuff. So he did-
Yep.
Send that in, and of course, I, and then I sent a letter to the gentleman that's-
Ryan?
Um, while I drafted it, Mallory sent it, that said, um, we have this completeness process in Hubbardstons. So, until it's complete, the clock doesn't run, right, on the, on the deadline for us to act until we determine it's complete, and that has to be, we need our expert to do this, and this will be the cost for getting it. It wasn't, I don't remember the amount, it wasn't a horrible amount.
It was like fourteen, around fourteen.
Um, and then I said, and then, but that doesn't include, once it's there, the detailed analysis of all those steps.
It's a few, yeah.
It's just, is it complete, right? But, and then Bill wrote back and said, he doesn't think the guy should submit it until the access issues are more clarified.
Mm-hmm.
Either the person that is providing the access is made a co-applicant.
Yeah.
Or, or at least it's acknowledged somewhere, cause it's incomplete without the access. So this is why it's been-
And it also sounds like there may need to be a third co-app applicant after he spoke with Roland. It sounds like there might be some encroachment on a third property, so.
Oh, okay. Anyway, it was interesting, the guy, so if you've been following this, um, I tried to cop, get you guys copied on everything. But one of the things they do is with a hundred and fifty-foot tower, it's way back, it's about a thousand, it says Main Street, but it's not, it's gonna be a thousand feet back on Main Street, is they put a, um, balloon up from a hundred and fifty feet in the air, a red balloon, so you get an idea of the impact, you know, uh, which I'm sure a lot of people will be interested in, and I did get question, I don't circulate a lot around town, but I did get calls and questions about this tower, so it'll have a lot of interest.
Yeah, I've, I have people come in too, so.
And, um, you know, it's, it's running kinda evenly between people who say, oh my god, sell this, you know, solve the cell tower, the-
Yeah.
You know, cellphone problems, all the dead spaces in this town, to people that are quite concerned, so I'm sure it'll be an interesting debate.
I don't think it'll solve all the cell service, cause it's just one carrier that's looking, AT&T is the carrier that's going up.
Oh, is that right? Anyway, um, more, so stay tuned on that one, but it was, uh, they, they postponed it possibly based on Bill's comments or just where they were.
And, yeah, and they're working with Roland.
Okay, so then our next thing we have was a special permit application, which is, uh, by some people by the name of, uh, Beal.
Beal's.
On, they're, they're the applicants, they're not the owners of this property, and they're not here tonight.
No.
Are they out there?
No.
No. Well, alright, so I'm gonna, I spent a lot of time on this.
Yeah.
Uh, and, and it was posted.
Yep.
So they did, and they had an opportunity to come. Um, so this is, just for background, it's, uh, the assessor's listed as zero off Brigham Street, so no address number. It's assessor's map, nine parcel thirty. The owner, present owner is Thomas Weitzel. The applicants are Cindy and Tom Beal, who do business under, or their corporation, I don't know whether it's incorporated, it's Ball here, Ball Hill Property Management. So this is a lot, it's sixty-one point five acres, and it's all in chapter sixty-one forestry land at the moment. Um, it's assessed at seventy-two thousand, and it's appraised on the assessor's at, uh, four hundred and forty-six eight. So this lot, if you saw on, I had it posted, has no, yeah, have you seen this lot?
That's the lot.
It has no frontage at all. It's listed, it's, it appears to be completely landlocked.
Actually, it's front, it's axis.
I was about to say, um, didn't one of the map show like a little?
But they-
Right, like those two, her property.
Yes, yes, and we're, we're, this is, tell, give me your name again.
Heidi Mariean.
Heidi?
Heidi Mariean.
Mariean, okay. I'll try to remember that, Heidi. Um, who is, we'll let you talk in a minute. Um, uh, who, who, who is property this old easement goes through?
That's, that's the one on the map here, number four.
Yeah.
Right at the, and it's put down here.
So, so let me, let me just still, uh, uh, sort of progress. So there is no frontage on a street. Um, this lot is also affected by the Wetlands Protection Act, and these people significantly affected by the Wetlands Protection Act, and these people have already gone to, um, and these are posted late, so I don't know whether you got to see them or not, but they've gone to DCR. Here's the DCR map, and they have actually, you know, DCR has this rule, under the Wetlands Protection Act rule, that existing houses can be replaced generally, right? So DCR, uh, wrote them, uh, an allowed use based on that exemption, an exemption based on that right, right? But, um, and what they're arguing to us in their special permit application is we are a, we're pre-existing use as a house. So, I think, but what happens with this is, and, um, we do have, we, we do allow, you know, pre-existing uses to continue, but they didn't point out that in our, our four-point-one-oh section of our bylaws, the non-conforming status is lost if a property ceases to be used for two years. This is, at, at any time from when zoning was passed forward. It has to be continuously used, and if it's interrupted by two years, it's lost. So one of the calls I got this week, uh, and I, he's probably, he may be listening, was from Tom Collier, who's a director butter, and this is another director butter. But what Tom said is he's lived there thirty-five years, and this has never been used as a house.
Oh, I can interject here also.
So.
The house is, they're describing out in the back, when I was a boy, which is quite a few years ago, the house was caving in. It's, hasn't been used, it's empty, the doors, there's no doors, the windows are gone, it's, there's an old, um, it's just, the house is, it's not really there anymore. It's gone into the-
I haven't seen it in a while.
And, and it, it, okay, so that's-
So nobody's used it.
Okay, so-
And I know that for a fact.
There's two houses out there, I think that's the-
Right, the other house is gone, isn't it?
No, it's still there, but it's like on sonata tubes, it's like an old shack too, so.
Right, right.
So what the assessor's list, lists this property as, is, it says it was a camp, it was built in nineteen forty, in the nineteen forties, per assessor's note, or, anyway, maybe older than that, but that's their date, and they say it's listed as a camp, not a, like a residence. It's listed as a camp. It, and it says on the listing, it has no bathrooms, no foundation, or, well, it says foundation, just first floor. It doesn't have like a cellar. Um, no septic system, it's heated by, uh, coal and wood, a wood stove, maybe? And it, and it-
It's not there anymore.
And it's a gross living area of four hundred and eighty square feet with an unfinished attic. Um, and also, I don't think it has electricity going to it, it did maybe at one point, but I know mass, they say in their application, National Grid won't use those wires, it would have to be completely run, uh, new, new wires and poles and everything. And its assessed value, this is of the structure, is twelve thousand three hundred, that was in two thousand eighteen. So I think, I think that they, they don't fit under the pre-existing, the, you know, the continue,
Use.
The pre-existing grandfathered use, they don't, because it hasn't been continuously used as a house, it's been abandoned for over a two-year period. So this means they would have to, it doesn't mean they can't develop it, but they just can't develop a, through a special permit as a pre-existing use, right? So, I think they-
And they don't have any frontage.
It's, and they have no frontage, right? So the frontage is two hundred feet that they need-
On a town-approved road.
On a town-approved road, or, for the rare exception, like we had for the house on, um, North Comet Pond, a road that actually existed serving multiple houses when zoning was passed, and meets all the criterias, and it's been in continuous use.
It was unused.
So there's, so there, that doesn't exist, so they could either build that road through a subdivision approval plan with cul-de-sac.
A fifty-foot wide road.
Uh, but the right-of-way has to be fifty feet, and the paved portion has to be twenty feet.
Twenty, twenty feet.
Or they can go to the zoning board of appeals and see if they can, and then, what happens then is, okay, then they've built their frontage, right? And they actually wouldn't even have to build, it's five hundred feet, they can't build more than five hundred feet, cause that's the limit for a dead-end road. And they could get away with a hundred and fifty feet of frontage, because if they're not gonna divide it, it will qualify as an estate lot, right? We have that exemption for estate lots. So they need to come up with a hundred and fifty feet of frontage, either by buying somebody out or by building their own road to get there, unless they can convince the zoning board of appeals that this is a truly unique situation and property, and they have different criteria, and we're not that bored. So, I don't, I don't know whether people agree with that analysis, but-
I agree.
I, I, I like, I agree with you saying that. All I had to go off of was the building commission.
So, if I could, if I could write a letter-
Yeah.
For Mallory to send, that we've looked over their preliminary documents, and the planning board doesn't have the jurisdiction-
Yeah.
To grant a special permit to put a house, you know, not with-
Cause it doesn't, it doesn't fit within any, any of that criteria.
Right, and it doesn't fit. So I could write a letter to that point where we don't believe that, that we could grant them a special permit, and I'd be willing to give them their money back.
Yeah.
That's fine.
And, and, and say, they may, they may be able to qualify with the zoning board, but, I mean, I don't know, that's different, you know, it's uniquely criteria, right?
We should be able to transfer the fee from here to the zoning board.
If they wanna do that, they can. I won't step on their, I just don't think we have-
Nothing else, I'm stuck in your pocket.
Sorry.
I'm stuck in your pocket?
It's out.
Okay, so, Hi, uh, Heidi.
Mariean.
Mariean.
Yes.
Uh, would you like to, would you like to speak to us tonight as a member of the public who's in a butter?
I just, I had a few notes here, let me just look at my notes. Actually, now my phone's not gonna work. Oh, there we go.
I think you've also, I know you're masked and concerned, but why don't you come a little closer, just so the speaker can pick you up?
Yes. Um, I just had a few concerns here, but I did not in any certain order here. Um, a few concerns of mine were they would be crossing my property to do this, which there is a right-of-way, but it, um, my septic field is there, I have historic stone walls, um, that robed originally just to get out back to get to a woodlot years ago, like in the eighteen hundreds, and then at some point they put it in as a right-of-way, but it's not that wide. I wanna say it's thirty-five feet at one point.
It's not that wide down by the road.
No, and they did have surveyors come, but they, they put a new property market, and I, I do not believe it's in the right spot either, too. Like, that would have to ever re-surveyed anyway. Uh, plus, it would go up onto the lawn of my house, my yard, if I rental at thirty-seven Brigham Street. Um, I know in their application they put that they were gonna upgrade the road, which, it's going across my land, and I was curious, this more information if this does proceed, um, what kind, what they mean by upgrading on my land to get to their land. Um, I'm concerned about big trucks going in and out if they do rebuild a house out there, um, and then if it isn't chapter sixty-one logging, like there's gonna, uh, there's gonna be huge logging trucks going over my lawn to get out there to get these logs out, cause I think you have to log every ten years or something, don't you? Um, and then I'd say questions about the square footage of the house and what is allowed, you know.
I don't think I, we've heard anything or seen any documentation that would allow them to access the property in that way at all.
Yeah. And I guess why-
Well, the, the logging trucks could go in, it is sixty-one A, that could be a real headache for you.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that's okay.
And the, the, because it's not the original, so.
But that's allowed, that isn't something they would bring.
But their septic system is right there, they would have to dig it up and move it, though.
Have to cover that side of the road, yeah.
They have to play the system.
The right-of-way was established before the septic.
There's certainly some interesting questions.
Yeah, I think she's got a lot of, she's, yeah.
I guess I have a lot of concern if, if this does proceed forward, yeah. Um, and I guess, my biggest concern was that they were trying to do more than just that house, like, since they are a building company, I just was worried they were trying to do a development, cause I was worried in town they were trying to finagle somehow to get a development out there, and that is my biggest fear behind my property there too. Um, but like I said, they don't have the frontage right now, um.
That's kinda hard to do with no frontage.
Yeah, but I know they have been asking everybody on the road to try to buy their land to get more frontage, so, but I just-
Cause this lot is not unique in town. We have other land, big lots, number of big lots that are landlocked like this, so.
No, we have many of these.
Yeah, so that's just with all my, just the few things I've written down. I was just came to see what, how this played out to.
Well, we, and you learned a lot about open space three weeks.
The map, the master plan.
The master.
Yes, that's really good. Okay, thank you.
Well, we will write to them, they have a right to, to finish their application and to have it sent for review, but I hate to send people when they're, they're, when, we, we don't have jurisdiction, it's a jurisdictional issue, that it shouldn't be our board that it's before, so that's what my letter will say.
Right.
Okay?
Okay, thank you.
And if you'd like us, uh, I don't know, um, I, I don't wanna CC, cause I don't, you on it, but you, but keep an eye on our agenda.
She doesn't have to CC, you don't have to CC it, it's a public record.
Excuse me.
Oh, okay.
Okay, that's-
It'll be a summary of what we talked about tonight.
For the public record, yeah.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, and thanks for being patient and waiting for us.
Thanks for waiting, Heidi.
Thank you.
Take care.
Okay, so the next item, um, is, uh, is Bill Mariean?
He is.
Alright. Alright, so, you might remember last time, we had these two lots that we got through tax title, right? And the question was.
Good night.
Yes, you, what?
I said, good night.
Good night.
Oh.
Sorry.
I can leave, right?
Yes, you can leave.
No, you can't.
You're stuck.
Sit here all night, no.
Right, thank you.
Thank, thank you for coming, okay. Um, so, uh, there's a handout for this, Mallory, can you hand that out, this was.
Before I figure, one of the owners lives on Old Westminster Road, their property abuts this land that we're talking about.
Yes.
And they wanted to know, when we go to taking it all that, was the feasibility of them trying to purchase part of it to, to keep it attached to theirs, and they were talking about all the trails and, like you had talked before at the previous meeting, so.
Okay, well, here was the deal.
I wanted to throw it out.
The deal with this, which was way back in Brian's time, three years ago, before Christopher was involved, was, there had been this pot of money appropriated from CPC to try to find lots, right? So, we did an exhaustive inventory of the tax title lots, and we came up with four, actually, three, but one was the little strip of land that's the right-of-way to this, that even had any possibilities, that wasn't a school, a graveyard underwater, I mean, that was it, right? And, uh, so, we, we said, the we, meaning the, uh, the affordable housing committee, which is a planning board, right? Would be willing to put these CPC money forward to foreclose on these lots, in exchange for having first dibs on their use, right? So, the town, so, you know, it was a handshake, it was an understanding, right? But I don't think the town can now just say, we've got, and we're gonna make money, because they're always gonna have a deficit, and housing will never be in the equation, right, to do it, so. So, but on the other hand, this is a difficult piece of land, and of course, we're also running into the other piece we did have was the, the, um, lot fifty-seven, which may or may not ever be really buildable, depending on what we can do with the lead. So, we, so I said to Bill, can you do an evaluation of this land, uh, to see what could be done with it, what could be built on it, could we build on it, right? So, he sent me this, this, this quote, you have it there, for doing the whole thing. But, I wrote him back and I said, I don't really wanna spend fifteen hundred dollars, if, if, it's like it's a hopeless, you know, I don't need, like, a dozen reasons we wouldn't be able to build it, if we can't build it, we can't build it, right?
Right.
So, I said, can you just take a quick look at it for two fifty, and we'll pay that out of our funds? Because I want a bigger vote, if you wanna go ahead, the fifteen hundred should be approved by the whole board. Uh, but, could you just, based on that initial look at two fifty, tell us whether there's any hope on this?
Okay.
Right? So, he's here tonight, and he's gonna talk to us, and it's sad that we can't put him on the big screen, but apparently that, we can't do that. So, can we hear him?
Yeah.
I can hear you.
Hi, Bill.
Hi there.
So, Bill, tell us, tell us what you, your first look.
Go ahead.
No, just tell us about your first look, what are you, were you able to do?
Okay, uh, so Mallory, can I share a screen, or that's not gonna work, can I?
I can do that.
Okay.
I'm just gonna change you to the host.
But it's still recording, right?
Yeah, it's still recording.
Okay.
I don't think you can see that.
I'm just making sure it gets it first, and then I'll move it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I made it most.
Alright, can anybody see the drawing that's on the screen?
I can see it.
Yep, it's visible.
Yeah, I'm blind.
Yep.
So, here are the two pieces of the property that we're talking about, the southernmost one, which is the really big one, um, we do them according to.
Wait, wait, Bill, I gotta get closer, I can't hear you, 'cause I'm, duh.
The frontage.
So, the bottom one, the blue outline, we own that one already?
Yeah.
Yes, and the other one, we're, the one that fronts on, uh, Old Westminster is very close, went to final judgment, we just only have the final.
Oh, okay.
So, the one on Old Westminster has four hundred feet of frontage, the southerly parcel, which is really big, has a fifty-foot access strip off of Street Road. And it's got about three hundred ninety feet from Street or Road to the property. And as you know, we're allowed a five hundred foot cul-de-sac, so in theory, you could put a cul-de-sac roughly at the end of that access strip and then create frontage if you wanted to do a subdivision. So, the other thing I wanted to show you, so these are, these, this is what we do real fast when we look at a piece of property. It doesn't have any virtual pools, it's not tributary to a full water fishery, it is tributary to outstanding resource water, 'cause it's tributary to water supply. It's not prime farm land, um, there is no public water supply land that will affect it, there's no historic resources there. The soils are really interesting in that they're something we call the pine sandy loam, but when you get greater than five or six feet down, it goes into a very gravelly, um, material. So, I'm gonna guess that that gravelly material is close, closer to the wetlands. Uh, it's got, the, the big piece of land has about eight point one acres of uplands. So, now I looked at the zoning by law to see what we can fit back there, and I'm not gonna go through all of the details. Really, you can get a senior residential development back there, but Alice, I discussed that, and it's so far out, practically on the Westminster, it is on the Westminster line, and a senior resident development way out.
That's not feasible.
Really doesn't make sense.
Took you half an hour to get an ambulance there, so I think.
Yeah.
Yeah, but you can get an open space residential development, because you're required to have twenty acres, and this is about thirty-five acres, although, it requires two hundred feet of frontage, now, I'll get into the frontage in a little bit. Half of the land needs to be preserved, but most of the land is, is wetlands and very hard to get to. Um, and the key point is, it's a special permit issued by the planning board, but you are able to waive or compliance with the regulations of the, the zoning by law. One of the regulations in the zoning by law is that you cannot get any more lots than you can with a permissible standard subdivision. So, that would be a little bit odd, um, let me get, see if I can get back to my. Yeah, so, we have a large piece of land that's about six, six and a half acres, and which, you can see these diagonally striped, um, area, that's what's known as a zone A, so, the pond that's just south of us is, is DCR, but the DCR only goes up to this green horizontal stripe, and then, really, the, the project or the property is not affected by DCR, but it is affected by what we know as a zone A. And a zone A is two hundred feet off of a tributary to a surface water supply. So, you can't put a septic system in there, you can't put a drainage basin in there, you really have to keep that area free and clear, but you could put a well in there. So, we have six and a half acres of uplands where the septic and whatever buildings and facilities would go. So, it is theoretically possible, under our current zoning bylaws, to do an open space residential development on this piece of property. And given the fact that we have six and a half acres, I'm guessing we could go anywhere from, well, I'm guessing we can get fourteen or more units out there with two public water supply wells and septic systems. Um, and then the other option, which we could get even more, is a forty B, which we had a conversation, a meeting or two ago, which is a comprehensive permit. So, under a comprehensive permit, our local zoning bylaws aren't able to be waived by the zoning board appeals. And, um, we could probably get more than fourteen units back there, and, like, again, the configuration of the units would be completely up to whoever the developer is, so you could do a s, you know, a multi-unit, um, apartment complex, you could do townhouses, you could do some single-family homes, although that would really restrict your use to the site, so. My short story is, the majority of this site is not usable, because it's zone A, we can't put a septic system into the zone A, we can't put drainage systems in the zone A, can't put buildings in the zone A, but we can put a well in the zone A, which, as we all know, has a big radius of public water supply well. So, we could do two separate development types, meaning the subdivision requirements of a dead-end street that's less than five hundred feet. Um, and you could make it work. The, the criteria for the open space residential development is that you probably have to, it doesn't say you must gain your access through your frontage, but the zoning by law says so. Uh, and if we really wanted to thread the needle, this one is exactly what the zoning by law would describe as a variance, because the criteria for the issuance of the variance is owing to the unique circumstances of the land, the shape of the land, the shape of the lotics, et cetera, et cetera. So, there are three avenues of development, we could develop it as a standard subdivision, with, I think, no more than two or three lots going to the zoning board appeals to say that our frontage is on Old Westminster Road, but I don't think you want single-family homes back there. You could develop it as an open space residential development special permit, and the planning board has wide latitude to waive and grant requirements, and I'll talk about that in a little second. And then you could go to a comprehensive permit, which takes all of our local bylaws off the table, and we still will be able to comply with, you know, the length of the dead-end street, but we would, then, the zoning board appeals to be the permanent granting authority. So, going backwards just a little bit, if we did our open space residential development, the planning board would have to waive some of the requirements. Now, I worked with an attorney many years ago, who said that, you know, a special permit never creates the precedence, until you grant me the permit, and then I'm gonna hold you to it forever and ever. Um, but technically speaking, a special permit is granted on the unique conditions surrounding an individual piece of property, so that your board would waive certain requirements with the understanding that there would be affordable units, and that would be a pretty unique requirement if somebody wanted to say, well, you set precedent. Uh, so, yes, it's developable, uh, two to three single-family residential units, maybe more than that under the open space, certainly more than that using a comprehensive permit, and there's plenty of land back there to, uh, put public water supplies, and I think that the soils are probably, just going from the soil report, that the soil's pretty conducive. Here's the DCR report, and our land is up here, you can just see a little bit of the yellow, but you don't see any of the orange or the yellow really on the property that we're talking about. So, that's, that's the short story, yeah, I, I see this as if the town chose to send this to a developer type of development group, and on profit, you could probably get some sort of affordable housing back there. But I don't want to minimize the impact of a driveway for multifamily development on these single-family homes on Street, uh, Street or Road. Yeah, the, the board as the affordable housing committee should take that into consideration.
Right, the access would be on Street or Road, right?
So, you, what, what, if we did this as a subdivision, the, that right-of-way is long enough for the ri, for a right-of-way, right? The access road is wide enough?
It's, it says it's fifty feet, and it, it is less than four hundred feet, and you're required to have a hundred twenty-foot cul-de-sac at the end.
So, if.
But actually, it's three hundred and eighty feet long, so it would be darn close to compliant for a subdivision road, yeah.
Okay, so then you wouldn't need to get these waivers, you could do that, but.
You could do a subdivision, yep, yep.
And the so, and the clusters are subdivision, I mean, that cluster by law is, is really a subdivision, in that it, the, houses are individually owned, right?
Right, um, yeah, and you can reduce plot areas and all sorts of other things, the open space residential development requires that fifty percent of the large, the total land area be preserved as open space. And of course, you're impacted, you can't do, you realistically can't do anything in the area that's cross-hatched.
Can, can, I thought though, on that open space residential development, don't they exclude wetlands and undevelopable land from that equation?
Are they excluded to the extent, well, don't forget that you can see I've got three sets of numbers up here, so you've got three, and two, you've got five or six extra acres of uplands that you can't get to. So, uh, yeah, they, they say that you can't have any more than twenty-five thousand square feet of wetlands on a forty thousand square foot lot, eighty thousand per foot lot.
Okay, and we've got another, other land that isn't wetland, that could be fifty percent, 'cause it's isolated, so you're telling me.
Yeah, you, you can't get to it.
Okay.
And, and if, if this were in a private developer's hands, I would tell the private developer, you can stand in front of the zoning board of appeals, and the criteria that state law has for the grant of a variance is really here. I mean, you have the unit configuration of a lot, the departography, the wetlands, all sorts of things that make gaining reasonable access to the backland impractical. So, you would have a, a reasonable and defendable argument for the ZBA for the grant of a variance, because you, there's no way you're gonna build a row off of Old Westminster to gain access to your uplands under the environmental regulations that we have in effect in Massachusetts, it's just, it, it's a hardship that's, you know, predates all sorts of other things.
But the variance would only be needed if you weren't doing a subdivision. There are two different routes, right? So, the.
Three different routes, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it's, okay, so, so here's what.
The variance is if you must gain your access through your frontage.
Yes.
And your, your principal frontage is the four hundred plus feet off of Old Westminster Road, but your access is through Street or Road, and there, there is a thread the needle argument to say that you also have frontage on Street or Road, so you are in fact gaining access through some of your frontage, because the by law is not that specific.
Okay, well.
That's what I said, that's a thread, you'd thread the needle argument.
So, and there's, in that white spot that's developable through the access, it's like si, eight acres, six acres?
I think it's six and a half, but I've, I've measured it twice now, so, uh, yeah, it, that approximately it's six and a half upland acres. And we would be able to put maybe, um, you can't put ten units in an acre with a septic system and a, and, and the well and all that kinda thing. So, I'm guessing you get about seven units an acre, so, um, well, not even, I, I'm guessing you get a total of fourteen units in there, plus the septic, plus the drainage, and then the wells, the well protective radiuses would be, um, down towards the wetlands, et cetera, et cetera, and that's the area.
But those units.
Put a well on a zone A.
How many, those units would be in how many buildings?
Well, that's what I'm saying, it, the number of units is, it could be whatever configuration is most efficient. So, it could be a two-bedroom or three-bedroom house, townhouse, or a two-bedroom apartment building that has seven units in the building, or wherever it is, it would be, uh, you know, I, I can't tell you because I haven't done anything to be filmed in this.
Okay. Okay, so, so he has that, um, uh, estimate for us, for fifteen hundred dollars, he'll write, you'll write down what you've said, right? And, and do it, go and do a little more detail with our options, right?
I'll make that a motion, no, yeah.
And I think we could do that, and I think, um, that we don't have to, I have to check this out, but I think we can pay for it out of the CPC money that was not spent on the tax foreclosures, 'cause we had appropriated twenty thousand dollars for that, right? But we only wound up having to spend ten of it, 'cause one got redeemed before it even went into suit, and they allowed it us to, uh, make that separate parcel that's the right-of-way to foreclose it at the same time. So, we've got ten thousand there, so why don't we make the mo, uh, the motion, make your motion there?
I just made the motion.
Okay.
Second.
Second, and that's the source we'll pay for it from.
Okay.
Okay, so it doesn't drain our planning board account. All right, um, my other two planning board members, are you ready to, did you, were you able to post this? No.
The.
The estimate?
The bill, I don't think it was posted, no.
Okay, so.
It, we don't, it was sent out, yeah, this was sent out, I believe.
Was it, did you get to see Bill's estimate, you guys, for doing this work?
Yes, it's in the, it's in the drive.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, so, um, the motions are made and seconded to approve that expenditure, and to take it from the leftover CPC funds that weren't used in the tax foreclosure, and that's been seconded, do you, so we're ready to vote, any more discussion?
Nope.
Okay, ready to vote? Go ahead.
Holman's eye.
Monroe eye.
Liddell eye.
Mallory, eye.
Okay, we got it.
Unanimous.
Unanimous. Thanks, Bill, we look forward to your, it's a lot to digest, you're telling us. I know you put a lot of time in this. I hope you can recoup it with the fifteen hundred, but I think we should try to see what we can do with it. And if we have to protect fifty percent of it, Bill, you know, take the edge off it.
My only concern is, when we first started talking about this, there was a discussion about all the trails.
Yeah.
And the people that live over there, I don't wanna disrupt their life.
Yeah, there are, um, there are fairly popular trails that connect into Westminster State Forest through this parcel.
So I don't know how it all can figure out, so maybe that's one of the things.
Well, we may be able to save those trails.
Well, ideally, that's, that's what we'd wanna do. I, I think we would run into a lot of opposition from the neighborhood.
Is there any, Bill, before you leave, is there any record of those trails where they run?
I, I don't, I haven't discovered it, but what you would be creating is a new trailhead. In other words, you'd maybe add a three or four parking spaces to connect to those trails. Uh, because, I mean, if you look at it, the majority of the developable portion of the site backs up to the residences on Street Row. And all the, the majority of that site will remain undisturbed other than for wells, and of course, the well's not gonna disturb the trail. So I think you would be creating a greater level of access to those trails.
I can send you, um, a GPS track of what they look like.
Okay.
Okay, all right. We'll take it from there. We'll have to also be mindful of protecting those backyards, right?
Thank you. Right.
Yeah.
But at least this is, this is worth our looking at, there is no, all the land from-
Yes, and it, well, the other thing is too, if you, just now you've said that most of this will be on the, behind the homes on Street Row, so we gotta look at that too.
Yeah.
How, is this gonna disrupt those folks too?
Yeah, from, from just straw pulling, just talking onto, uh, talking to a few people who live on Street Row, because I live nearby there.
Yeah.
Um, when the idea of doing it as a parcel, a, a project where we save a significant portion of the parcel seemed palatable to them.
Okay.
Um, where that became part of the specific purpose of the town being involved in it.
Okay.
So that, that is very important to, uh, to the abutters.
So, Bill, think, think about that, uh, open space development, residential development with a fifty percent saved. I mean, you're gonna think about all of them, but maybe that's the way to go.
Well, I mean, quite, quite frankly, you've got less than ten acres of a thirty-some-odd acre parcel. So you're on, you're going to save more than fifty percent, no matter what your, your development scenario is. Even if you go with a forty B, the, the diagonal crosshatch is a state law. So you can't, it cannot be waived under a forty B, it's not subject to the local. So, no matter what you're doing, this thirty, three hundred, one fifty-five thousand square foot open space area is, yeah, that's your developable portion, because you can't get to the rest.
Al- als- also, maybe I'm wrong, but, uh, cause I've read, I have read these, I read them when I was, we were trying to do their growth control thing. But is there a limit that there's only two units per building in the open space residential? There might be.
Yeah, there might be, um, yeah.
So anyway, that's something else to consider. I think even if, you know, we've got, we built one in town, right? So even if our next development only was five or six.
Well, we gotta look at it and see what's-
We gotta look at what you can do.
Yeah, let's, let's not jump too deep here.
We'll wait to, we'll wait to hear from you, and, um-
Yeah, the, the open space residential development is limited to single-family homes and two-family homes, so you can't do an apartment now.
No, but you could-
But a, I mean, but it's a two-family home, you could do multiple townhouses, there's no limitation on that, as long as. The biggest constraint here will be septic and water supply, but, and, and that is truly the constraint threat to our whole town. So I don't see water supply as an issue because I can fit two public water supply wells on the property in the zone A, and that complies with the zone criteria. And then that narrows us down to the septic, and the soil reports say that this is a pretty good soil.
Okay.
So, yeah, um, I, I, it has development potential.
Great, great, well, let us know, and let us know whether you think the town is up to it under that, to doing, you know, to doing the contracting and stuff. I don't know, give us some direction, whatever you can. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so that's exciting, huh? All right, I think we're closing in on it here, it's getting late. What else is on this?
Special for the, uh, update on old business. I want to review Seneca Road application.
Oh, I still haven't done that. I will get it till next time. If Mallory's got it mostly done, I just wanna improve it.
Update on open progress.
Okay, so twenty-eight, Mallory can tell you, I asked her to trace these down.
Twenty-eight, George Howard Road is sold to a family who's gonna be using it for residential farming purposes, so there will be no country club application coming in. Unless for some reason the sale of the property falls through. The applicant, I mean, the owner, current owner came in and has applied for a perk test and is gonna be updating the septic and all that good stuff.
Okay.
I spoke with Alan Crane on twenty-six Worcester Road, um, he really didn't have an update. He was gonna reach back out to Marion DePinto, now that she should be healed up from surgery and see where-
That's right, she was going to surgery for-
Right, shoulder, wasn't it?
Well, I'm not pressing him, I just want, I mean, we're holding money, he came to us to get his escrow back, right?
Yeah.
Right, right.
So he's, he's gotta follow up on that.
Well, it's good we're doing this, keep up on-
Of course. Yeah, well, because, right, I'm trying to like wrap up the end of the year here.
And then Solar Fields, I sent out five certified letters, I've only gotten two cards back, but I haven't gotten any reports back from any of the solar companies.
How long did you give them?
Thirty days.
And when did you send them out?
The end of March, our last meeting.
Okay, so they've got a while, a while, a while.
Till they go, till they undergo small.
Yeah.
Well, it's surprising that three of the cards haven't come back.
They haven't come back at all, like, not undeliverable, not, they just haven't come back. And these ones were signed for like-
Was it, were they to a PO box or to a business address?
To a business address. And I double-checked, Christina has a beautiful spreadsheet of mailing and physical, so, and I double-checked online too.
Here's what you have to do with that, an old trick from being a lawyer, right? You send out one certified mail.
Uh-huh.
And you send out another one regular mail.
Okay, yeah, I do that, I send two copies, and-
Okay, so if they re- there's a presumption, if the regular mail doesn't come back.
It's been, yeah.
And the certified, you know, that they just didn't pick up the-
Yeah.
Right?
Mm-hmm.
And then we, then we gotta consider our next step. I just think what we need to do is tell these people we're serious about this. Here's a template, do we have a template that we've sent them?
I don't think so. The few, the few you-
Yeah.
Yes, we, I'm sorry to interrupt here, we do have a temp, but because we utilized it several years ago with, uh, some of the other, um, with, with, uh, with the prior, in, in a prior, uh, year.
Did Christina invent, is that something Christina invented?
You just said that parego, both parego.
Parego, yes, thank you, I, I do recall that.
Nex- Nexamp did not have that requirement in their, uh, special permit.
Oh.
I didn't hear what he said.
I couldn't hear.
One of the companies didn't have the, that in their special permit as a requirement. Which one, Bill, Nexamp?
Do you know which one, Bill?
Nexamp, the one on Pitcherville?
Pitcherville?
Pitcherville. Nexiam?
Uh, the, the seat board one, the one, the-
Solar.
Oh, they're one of the ones that returned it.
They returned it anyway, so they, oh.
So.
So it's the, all three of you are on one, so, aren't they?
Yeah, there's three on one, so.
In Grand Row.
Yeah, all the ones, Bill, had the re- reporting requirement. Nexamp was the very first one, and, uh, I don't believe we had the annual reporting in that permit.
Can we check that?
Is it part of the, uh, bylaw? I, 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 I need to check, but I thought the bylaw indicated that it was a requirement.
No, Nexamp was the first one we amended, I think we amended the bylaw after Nexamp to include the certificate to generate in a lot, the other things that we learned from them. Uh, but I don't think that there's any, there's, there's no harm nor foul by sending that letter to them and telling them to give us a report, yeah.
But I do think if there's a format for it, people, people are good, better at filling in the blanks than inventing a letter.
Yeah.
So, um-
I'll talk to Chris, Christine and I have been going for walks every Monday, so, um-
Oh, you have, can you talk to her?
Yeah, I'll talk to her and see.
Yeah, she, she'll say she gave it to me, and that's probably true. Okay, um, all right, update on, uh, correction to the zoning bylaw. So, uh, Lori, our clerk, decided that she needed to involve town council on this because these corrections were more than clerical errors. I mean, some of them were, like, I think of them all as clerical errors, but because they were like changes that were never put in, or, but you know, they weren't like typos, right? So, I'm gonna try to follow up on that. I really, that's one of the things I really wanna get done before my term expires here also. Do you have any more information from her, do you know?
Madam Chair, I just wanna point out something, and that is, is that the current bylaw that we currently have posted on the website, uh, dates from two thousand eighteen. I think the public in general does not have current bylaws that are in effect, which I think puts us in a situation where, um, what I think is happening here is, is that our, our town population does not have the right information in front of them, especially when it comes to requests or requirements that they have to meet. And I think from that perspective, we're not necessarily doing a service to our town by having, by not having therefore all of the, the, uh, the most up-to-date bylaws on, on the webpage. Uh, I would say that at this point in time, it really needs to be addressed by the town clerk, uh, to ensure that we do have those bylaws and point out to her that I think this is, maybe it's not a, a, a liability in the sense that somebody comes to us, but rather, or that, that, that we're not really performing our service to the town by providing the most adequate information.
I think where that really-
And updated information.
Yeah, I agree with that, and I think particularly with the zone, with the sign by law. Cause we changed that. Somebody comes in with a sign a long time ago and it's still not in there, you know, so.
Yeah.
I'll t- I'll try to talk to Lori, I'll try to find out what, which of the lawyers at town council, Copelman and Page got, um, assigned it, you know, and see if I can push it.
Where is it?
It's, that's where it is right now.
Just, just as a matter of point, I agree with French one hundred percent, but legally, um, the copies on file with the town clerk are the ones that applicants are obligated to use, not the website. So when they make an application, because I do this all the time, when I make an application, I submit to the town clerk for a certified copy of lit- its regulations. So you're not, and I'm not an attorney, uh, but you're not in jeopardy with applicants, but you're doing a disservice to the residents of the town.
Correct, because that is the, that is the first point that they're going to be going to in order to be able to get the, uh, the information. A lot of folks don't necessarily know that they can get that copy from the town clerk, and they actually say, oh, there's a bylaw here. They don't necessarily even see that it's a two thousand eighteen version.
Okay, all right, I'll follow up on it. I also wanted to say on this list, you know, that great housing production plan, which keeps us out of trouble with, uh, the Department of Housing and Urban Development, right, the, has, it was, they're supposed to be redone every five years, uh.
What's ours?
And ours, well, our, the one we submitted that we finally got passed in two thousand seventeen was for two thousand ten through two thousand fifteen, right? So I don't know whether they're gonna go from seventeen or fifteen, but either way, we're on the, you know, we're, we're there again. So I suggested to David, I wrote him a letter saying, uh, a proposed letter, a draft letter, to send to them saying, we have taken the following steps, you know? The, uh, the house of the habitat house, the inventory of land, the tax-taking lots, the, this, this is what we've done, and we, we want a three-year extension on what we have in writing. Uh, and I don't know whether he sent it, I haven't talked to him, I have to follow up on it, but that's where I think we should go.
All right.
On that, see if we can get to at least two thousand, you know, three-year extension. Um, I think they'll do it for us, particularly since our advisor said a whole lot of communities aren't even bothering to file them anymore, right?
Right.
And we're at least making the effort, so who knows, but anyway, I wanted to tell you I did that, I just meant to ask you last time.
Ask a question.
Yes.
Uh, my understanding is this, Ryan, Ryan is coming back, uh, is it next week?
May second.
Oh, May second, okay, fine, um, so, so, uh, is he, is he taking over, and Mr. Nixon is leaving us, or do, does anybody have any information on that?
Yeah. Ryan's gonna be the town administrator again. David's, are they doing a transition? I don't know if they're transitioning or not. The way David's contract was written was that he was done when Ryan came back.
I, I just, I just wanna caution everybody, I know that there's, I mean, Ryan has been away for quite some time, and I know that he has been involved sometimes in some of these discussions because he, he does get that, some of that information. But has this handover happened, there's obviously a potential for some of these things to slip through the cracks. We just need to make sure that we are keeping, uh, Ryan abreast and Mr. Nixon abreast, on making sure that what our interests are, at least in terms of, uh, what needs to be done by the town administrator, keep, be kept in the, uh, you know, be, be, be kept in the light.
Right, fortunately, a lot of our stuff Ryan was involved in, it goes way back, the tax-taking and the, I'll try to make an appointment.
Correct.
And keep everybody up to date in that office. Okay.
Oh, Alice, Bill.
Bill.
Finlay.
Go ahead.
Okay, Alice, on, on your letter to DHCD.
Yeah.
You might also, something that's gonna work well in your favor is to mention the fact that we are finalizing the master plan. And that will work well in your favor when you approach them with that.
Yeah, I think I threw that in too, but I'll read it again. I'll send you the draft, Bill, if you have a second, you can read it, it's not long. And then I gotta see if, uh, David, maybe David sent it, I don't know, but I'll, I'll, I'll make sure everybody on the committee also gets a copy on the board here. I will put that on there. Okay, so, I got a note cor- under correspondence from the FinCom saying, uh, that they determined that our, uh, accessory dwelling unit bylaw has no commer- you know, has no financial impact, so they're not weighing in on it. Horrible Housing, I wanna tell everybody, uh, thank, we had three members actually, uh, that came to the, um, wine tasting, and that generated seventeen thou- seventeen hundred dollars. Uh, and so now, you know, originally we set this dead catastrophic goal of thirty-five thousand that we were gonna raise, COVID years, right? We are, and then we, then we put in a CPA money because we thought we'll never make it, we had so little. But, so the CPA we put in for twenty-five thousand in ARPA, twenty-five thousand, but since then, we're within nine thousand dollars of that thirty-five thousand.
That's awesome.
Oh, wow.
Which is just incredible. Spencer Savings Bank gave us, their foundation gave us five thousand, and just bits and pieces, and-
Yeah.
Uh, so, so it's kinda up to ARPA whether you're gonna fund our different amount, but if you're gonna wait to see if the CPA article passes on town, at the town meeting, it will be substantially reduced on the floor by vote.
Cool.
So we've done really, I'm really proud of that committee, they've really done a lot. And it's, there's one last, um, you know, this is, this is also slated to finish in June, because that's when the Volk School kids go home, and they're building it, right? So, uh, but there's one more fundraiser, and it is, um, at what you said brewery? I think I put this on here somewhere, probably wrote it on the other plan. And it's, anyway, it's a, a day there, there'll be, if you buy a beer there that day, I'll have to get the day I wrote it down here.
It's, uh, May fifth.
May fifth, oh, there it is, okay, May fifth. Go buy a beer and a dollar of your beer, every beer sold that day goes to this project. So, and I think there'll be some auction items.
And we just moved our meeting date from the fest, so, you have no excuse.
That's right, no excuse. She said vineyards, or, what's she called?
And I think the, uh, the LPSC is matching, um, the La Ponce Sportsman's Club is matching up to a thousand dollars on that too.
Oh, that's right. So, yes, so if you come, you can have, you'll, two box will go right to this project, and then the gap will be even smaller. Anyway, they've done-
Should be a big day, Cinco de Mayo at the brewery.
I was, I was thinking, yeah, that's awesome.
I know.
We're, we're, yeah, we're up for it, yeah. So come, everybody come, and everybody in the viewing audience out there, any, any beer sold that day.
I mean, are we gonna end up with a quorum?
Oh, we don't have, we, we had a quorum at our wine tasting, it was okay. You just can't talk shop, you have to drink, drink your beer and talk about the weather. Okay, um-
You can't talk to each other.
You can, you just can't talk business.
I know, I'm kidding you.
All right, so, no, no on the zoning enforcement stuff, there's been nothing done.
No, we are getting any, hopefully zoning enforcement.
Somebody needs to, John, John's right there, right? Hey, John, you haven't pulled papers yet. See there?
There he is.
You have to go, are you gonna run again, right?
Yes, I am.
You have to go get your papers, time's running out.
I'm gonna talk to him, I'm gonna grab him.
Okay, bring it, you know, we'll all sign him if you, just give us a call.
I, I have plenty of people, but yes, I'll have you guys sign, right?
I know, you, you, you've got lots of friends in town. Okay, excellent, we, we need you to do that. Um-
Yep, no problem.
And the oth- the other thing, a matter of not anticipated, I just wanted to say, it wasn't like totally unanticipated, maybe you know and I forgot. But I went to the MJTC, me- But I went to the MJTC meeting, it's a virtual meeting, and the, the, the bridge over Burnshirt River on Williamsville is gonna be replaced.
Boy, I worked, I worked the detail.
Uh, uh, on, uh, in, in twenty twenty-four fiscal year.
Oh, cool, what's funny?
Somebody just walked in dressed as a traffic cone.
Oh, geez.
Well, hello, Tony. Hello, Tony.
Last item is the next meeting, which you've decided is five twelve, right?
Hold on.
I had a, I had a question too, for when we're under matters not.
I have a question.
Yes.
So when we were talking about the tower earlier, it made me, um, it made me wonder about the tower that the town is building, does that go through?
We have pieces.
Well, does that go through the special permit process too with us?
No, because it's town.
No, because it's a municipal exception.
We've had pieces and all that, they go for over three years now, so.
Yeah, they're all just sitting down at the, the permit was approved because we had our thirty day, um, time limit to review a permit. Um, so the permit was approved and they haven't paid the permit fee or anything like that, so it's just sitting stagnant.
Terrible.
Why?
One, one more item, and that is, is I understand that the planning, and that the bank or the, uh, select board also, uh, reviewed the, uh, zoning by law changes that were, that are being proposed, and I think they, uh, they accepted them without comment.
I think that's right, I heard that there was no problem with it and they didn't want me to come, so.
Yeah, I'm hearing that.
Correct.
Okay.
Good.
Okay.
I didn't hear anything about that.
Me either.
I, no, I, I, I watched, I watched the planning boards, uh, outside the select board meeting, and there was, uh, there was a vote.
Well, we had presented extensively prior to that, so.
I, absolutely, and I've done a good job from that perspective.
And I think they have- All right, all right, so.
Other questions?
I got a question.
Oh, and the best by law too, both of them, right, and that, that was true with the, uh-
Correct.
FinCom too, that they thought that would have, have no impact on the tax dollars, so. Bill.
I have a question, what's the status of two forty-eight Gardener Road? I go by there and the car dealership is operating very well, so I, I didn't know, as usual, nothing's happened, right?
Nothing's, nothing's happened.
I just wanted to bring it up and I'd like to see it back on our-
I leave it there, something's-
Hopefully, hopefully in July.
It's still on the agenda.
Oh, I don't see it, okay, I'm sorry, I-
Yeah, it's still there.
Nine, nine B.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
But that, I understand the point.
Okay, next meeting, May twelfth, six thirty?
Sounds good.
Okay.
I'll make that motion.
Works.
Got a motion to adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
No debate, all in favor, Libdo eye.
Hi, Holman's eye.
Hi.
Eye.
Okay, good night, everybody.